Just give me thumbs. Okay, good evening. This is the Tuesday, October twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, regular meeting of the Board of Education. I am officially calling the meeting to order. Time is now seven o'clock. Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item up on our agenda is an anticipated adjournment to executive session. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations, the employment history of particular persons, personnel matters under employee records, and matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice from counsel.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. We're now in executive session and we're expected to return at eight P M sharp.
Ex officio board education member.
Okay, we are, we are back in public session. The time is now eight ten P M. And the first item on our agenda is student voice. We have a student public comment. This year, the board has decided to hear from our students directly. We will have one student representative from R J Bailey School and one student representative from Woodlands Middle High School. Tonight, our student board member from R J Bailey School is Ms. Blessing Bridgers. Is she here? Please come up, Ms. Bridgers. Is there a microphone for her?
Yes.
Great. Whenever you're ready, take the mic.
Good eve-
Is it on?
Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Blessing Neo-Bridgers and I am here to tell you all about my experience in the sixth grade so far. What I like about the sixth grade is I'm in the band and I play the trumpet. I adore music and Ms. Weinberg, my band teacher. She is nice and she is nice to me and my band needs. But when we, but when you play the trumpet for too long, your mouth can hurt. I love social studies because I like learning about history and historical figures. So far, we have learned about Native Americans being nomads to staying in one place. And we also reviewed the seven continents of the world. I hope to travel to each one someday. I enjoy my teachers because they make learning fun by using games, music, activities, and prizes. And I am making new friends. Things this year and things this year in the sixth grade that I'm looking forward to are in science, we will use microscopes and observe many particles, which to me is exciting. We will also, we will all, I am also looking forward to the sixth grade trips because I have been on the trips that we are going to have. But yeah, and the sixth grade dance, because I have been planning for this dance from the moment I stepped into R J Bailey School. Thank you for inviting me to this meeting and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Blessing, and thank you for letting us know what's going on at R J Bailey School. Thank you. Great job. And next on our agenda, we have from Woodlands Middle High School, Romaine Smith. Roman? They might know you. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, students, parents. My name is Roman Smith and I'm a student who attends Woodlands Middle High School. Something I like or really love about my school is the faculty and the staff. They're very friendly. It's a calm environment. I'm part of, well, currently I'm not in the sport, but usually I play basketball and I'm also signing up for track. So one thing I like is that, you know, the sports are very welcoming. We're not the best at sports, but, you know, we try and that's what counts. So there's a lot of effort that goes into our school. I'm an honor student. I'm in A B classes. So my favorite thing about, you know, the classes I'm in is that when I'm, you know, learning and stuff like that, my teachers are very helpful. They're instructive, they're supportive. And if I have any issues, I can always go to our guidance counselors. Very open, very friendly. And lunch, of course, lunch is good for my time being here. I've been here since, I want to say, like, second, third grade. And as time has went on, the lunch has gotten progressively better. So I can gladly say that I like to eat at Woodlands Middle High School. And I think that's really it. I love my school. I don't want to be anywhere else. Thank you guys for having me. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Okay, now we're gonna move on to public comment. Ms. Pineda, is there any public commenters? And if anyone else would like to sign up for public comment, please do so now. I see someone moving. Do you want to sign up? Or, okay. Oh, we have a lot. Oh, wow. Okay, so let me cross that out so I don't read it. Okay, so I'm gonna try to very quickly read our statement. We have, since we have an audience at our Board of Ed meeting this evening, I think it would be helpful to outline our regular protocol and some basic rules with regard to comments from the public. The law does not require that the Board of Ed allow public comments at board meetings. However, this board traditionally allows and encourages input from the public. We do risk to remind everyone that per our policy fifteen ten, we require that all speakers adhere to the following protocols. People must sign up, which everyone did. Speakers will be permitted to speak for no more, longer than four minutes. So when you come up to the podium, there's a clock there. We can see the clock. You can see the clock. So four minutes is max. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. No obscene language, no scandalous statements, no threats of violence, no statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice. We will take all information under advisement for the board consideration. In most cases, there will be no response from the board during a board meeting so that we would keep the meeting moving. And lastly, when you're called upon, please state your name for the record before making your public comment. Okay, we have, I think, fifteen signed up today. So first, we have Ms. Marilyn Peña. And the topic? They must know you. And the topic is fixing the soccer fields.
Was that on purpose?
There you go.
Good evening, board members, guests, parents, students. My name is Marlene Peña. I'm here to discuss the soccer field. It's always about funding, numbers, and engagement. In two thousand and twenty one, you had a total of, let me see here, you had a total of thirty-two players. That's modified and varsity. In twenty, sorry, my glasses are on. Twenty twenty-two, you had a total of forty-one players between modified and JV. In two thousand and twenty-three, you had a total of seventy-one players between modified and JV. And as you can see, the numbers are going up and up. You have supportive parents, you have engaged students, you also have great coaches. Mr. Tyler is, not only is he a part-time, but he's a full-time, above and beyond, and a dedicated coach. One of the things that they do talk about that with a soccer field, you need netting. My son, who has been playing soccer since the seventh grade, he's in ninth grade now. Two years ago, it wasn't, I think it was last summer, last spring, there was no netting. And the ball went over the fence where the goal, and he went to go get it. And unfortunately, he ran into a yellow jacket wasp nest. And he was stung a few times and I had to pick him up. He was stung on his face, his neck, his legs. And by the grace of God, he did not have an allergic reaction. But I took him to urgent care and they, and they were like, he was stung? Oh, because there was no reaction. God forbid it would have been somebody else allergic to something and they would have just died on the spot. So not only, I mean, you know, we also talk about the field, the, 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 what is this? The turf, but what about the safety of the kids? The netting, the fact that if you go down there, it's a cliff. And many of our children go down there to get a bone. And this is not this class, this is the class before that, the class before that. All these years of students playing soccer, they're all going down a cliff and nobody ever fell. You know, so that's one thing that I want to say. But besides that, your, your engagement is growing. And I get it, you know, there's no funding. But there's a lot of corporations in Greenberg, not only in Fairview, but you have them in Elmsford, you have them in Tarrytown. And there's always a way for them to get a write-off and do funding and give a scholarship, give a grant. And these students, you had somebody go to Spain last year to play soccer. I mean, if that's not a wake-up call, we can have half of these kids play soccer. Oh, it's almost up. You know, in Spain, a goal, goal. Next year, you have, I guess my time is up. Oh, we got forty-eight seconds? You know, but I'm just saying, the football team is important, the swimming team is important, baseball is important. I won't even get into baseball because my son, you know. But that turf is just, that needs help too. But soccer, you have these dedicated kids. They're here at six forty-five, six thirty to practice on the turf that they have with no netting and they're here practicing even after school. You know, they're dedicated. Not only are they dedicated, but have you seen their grades? Because you have I B, honor roll, high honor roll students. They're dedicated with their sports and their class. And last but not least, my daughter and her friends have been playing soccer for almost five years and they're gonna be seniors and they're never gonna play on a soccer field. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Kreitsberg and the topic is fixing the soccer field.
Good evening, board members. My name is Elizabeth Kreitsberg. I'm a senior on the girls' varsity soccer team and I'm also one of the captains. I've been playing soccer here since eighth grade. And unlike the boys' team, the girls' team has taken a cut in numbers over the years. But I think one of the most important issues is the field itself. Last year, for my I B E S S class, I did my I A on the soil quality of the soccer field and came up with some possible solutions. I could have someone forward that project to one of you. Let's see. So I dug up bits of soil from across the entire field and tested to see what majority was sand, silt, or clay. And majority of the field was sand, which is a really good base to start with to fixing the field. We've got, we've got the perfect base. It's just, it's gonna take time and, and money and dedication. Because, I mean, see, we've got some people here from the boys' soccer team. The Tyler has been growing this team for the last couple of years. And it's just, it's really hard sometimes with the field. There's so many dips and divots, especially with the modified field. That one, I, I hate having to practice down there because I'm so worried I'm gonna sprain my ankle. But up here, the grass is so dry and it's just all dirt. And there's like patches of just mud when it rains. And for our goalies, that's just not a fun time. So I would love to forward my I A to you guys just so you could see the research that I did and hopefully that can help push for more fixing of the soccer field. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Giovanna Isguera. Next, sorry, is it on? Next, we have Giovanna Isguera. She heard me. Okay.
Hello. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
My name is Giovanna Isguera and I have two children in the Greenberg School District. Today, I'm here again because I want, I didn't want to, but because I don't have other choice than to come here to get some truthful answers for you that hopefully you can give it to me. I have been advocating for better soccer fields and for more staff that can support the soccer teams for the past three years. That current soccer, the current soccer coach made a presentation to the Finals and Facilities Committee in two thousand and twenty-four. Unfortunately, the committee didn't approve his proposition. This presentation had all the information needed to make this project a reality, but they denied it. They prioritized all their items. After that, I came to join the Finals and Facilities Committee to continue to advocate and to bring up that bad conditions, the improper maintenance, and the unregulated size of the soccer field. Furthermore, in two thousand and twenty-four, my friend Jasmine Ramirez, the soccer coach, the director of facilities, and I had a meeting where we discussed about the athletic budget, coaches, and more. We also discussed about grants and bonds that could help to renovate the soccer fields. The director of the Plugging Department said that he will work on something and that he will start soon. The next facilities meeting, I asked for an update on that. And the answer from the director of facilities was that, yes, in fact, the athletic director was working on something. Several meetings passed and I asked again and they continued to tell me that, yes, the athletic director and the previous assistant superintendent for business were working on it. In August of two thousand and twenty-five, we had a walk through the buildings and again, I asked for an update about the soccer fields. And there were no answers for me at that time. Then I contacted the new assistant superintendent for business and she said that there is no record of any kind that someone was working on something for the soccer program. And this is my question. How the director of facilities told me that they were working on something when there is no record of this? I really need some answers. Now, you renovated the tennis courts and the track and the football field. If you made that happen, how is that you can make it happen for the soccer program? Our soccer team deserves the same attention that the other sports. And how can you make one team happy and not the other one? When I am sure that if you made it possible for the tennis, the track, and football, you can make a war for soccer too. Okay, and remember, yes, I want you to remember this. God gave you this position so you can make a war or you can, this position to be fair and to do good to all the students in our district. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Donovan Russell. And the topic is soccer.
Hi. Hi, my name is Donovan Russell. Nice timer. Okay. I'm not here so much to give the points myself. I'm more here to introduce the other members of the soccer program as I'm a senior captain on the team right now and I think it's better you hear from the people who are gonna be on the team for a few more years and are gonna get to experience these things and would benefit from changes. We have, we have so many members on the team who have been there for years. The team, the team's been growing for years. All three teams have been growing for years. The program is massive now compared to when I was in it. When I was in Modified, we had some, five kids, Brandon, I think, yeah. And we, we knew it was a full team. And now we have more than enough of a full team for Modified. We have more than enough of a full team for JV, more than enough of a full, of a full team for Varsity. And the program has grown so much in the years. And right now, on the younger side, there's so much potential. And all these kids love soccer. They're deeply dedicated to it. Soccer is their life right now. That's all they, they do. They play soccer all day. And for them to grow up, they need like these, they need, they need a lot of changes on the fields, which I'm not, again, I'm not gonna talk about. I gotta leave this to the rest of the kids. But they need better fields, they need funding. We need everything for these kids and for them to actually utilize this. They need it now. They need it these years because, for me, I can't personally get so much benefit out of this. I'm a senior. I'm graduating now. Our season's about over. But if these kids want to grow up, win a sectionals title for the first time in some fifteen-something years, they need these things. We need fields at a regulation. Like Elizabeth said, real quick, it wasn't sand. I think she may have misread, but it's clay. Our field right now is majority clay, which the material underneath the field is actually the correct material and the most ideal material to be played on. But what we actually need is we need proper seeding and we need proper grass on top of the fields, which, again, is not a crazy expense, but we need the field to actually be leveled properly. And then it just needs sand, sorry, it just needs seeds and it needs grass and then it will actually be playable. We have people coming out and mowing the fields, not getting paid for it. But we have to do a lot of work to maintain fields that are, again, only half up to regulation. And again, I've been on this team for, what, five, six years? And I've had to experience some of the things that Katalani's mother just talked about with, we have to go down and get balls every single time we kick them over because we have a very short fence. And sometimes we don't have the proper netting, like you'll see at schools like LaFell. You'll see at schools like Hale, they have taller fences that block off the balls from being shot into the woods so that kids don't actually have to go into the woods and get those balls because it can harm the kids. So things like that, just some basic things that we all need. And I'm just here to introduce to you the rest of the soccer team that's gonna talk about it because they're very passionate about these issues and this is what they're gonna grow up with.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Brian Hernandez.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Brian Hernandez and I've been playing soccer for the school for like four years. Yeah, so I'm just here to talk about some of the injustices that like the soccer team faces. Like, I know, I don't wanna be too repetitive because I know you pay a lot already. But, you know, the football team, they don't have as many kids as the whole soccer program. They have a Modified and a, and a Varsity, they have like maybe forty kids. We, as a Modified, JV, and Varsity have like seventy kids. So we have like, we make up a majority of the fall students for sports. And our program has been going throughout the years thanks to our incredible coach, Coach Tyler. Yeah, he, he does a lot for the program. He, he like comes, as Donovan said, he like mows the lawns, he mows the, the fields and he like paints them every time so we have nice fields to play on. You know, he's one of the main reasons why I continue to play soccer because I was never really good at soccer, but he's like a really nice guy. And I, I'm really happy you guys hired me. It's very exciting. Yeah, so, so recently, the football team got to play in Mobile Stadium and I, I was very excited. I actually went to that game. I was, because I have a couple of friends on the football team. Like, of course, that's great for them, but I also want to know, like, when can we get an opportunity like that to play? And additionally, like, as other people say, like, the grass is not very good to play on. And the football team always gets turf fields to play on. Like, and I would also know if that's an option for us because like, a lot of our players, like, they can get hurt because of the, like, pits that we have. And like, our goal is to keep our students healthy so they can play and we can hopefully win more games. Yeah, so also like the, as Franco's mom said, the more, the recently renovated tennis courts, like, they, they don't have as many kids as us either. Like, we have more kids in the tennis and the football team and we still have to, we get pushed down out of the, out of the turf that we had to like for, for football. We have to play on the grass field and sometimes even the modified field, which is, yeah, that's really bad. And so, yeah, so like the football also has, the football program also has more coaches. I understand five paid coaches. And we only have one for JV and one for Varsity. So we have like double or triple the kids that they have and we only get one, maybe two coaches for them. So I just wanna, I just wanna say, yeah, like, I just wanted to point out the injustices that are faced throughout the soccer program. I just wanna say thank you guys for allowing us to come and talk about the problems that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Next on our list is Ivan Tubelitz. If I mess up your name, can you fix it when you come up? And your topic is soccer. Ivan, can you say your name for me so I can fix myself?
Sorry, what?
Your last name.
Tubelitz.
Tubelitz. Oh, I wasn't that off. Okay. And the topic is soccer. Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ivan Tubelitz and I'm gonna be focusing on the coaches' pay and kind of how the coaches are treated. So, first of all, our coach, first of all, our coach Tyler, you've probably already heard about him and you're gonna hear more about him because he's a great coach. He, he wakes up very early for us and he tries very hard even though we're, you know, we're not always winning. And this year, he wasn't paid for everything that he does because he had to pay for the assistant coaches because the school wouldn't pay for them. So, he was paid, um, around like nine dollars an hour for everything that he did, which is definitely not enough, you know, cause he does a lot for us. Second point, there's only one varsity soccer coach paid position and there's five varsity coaches for like football, for other teams. Um, there's also only one modified coach and one junior varsity coach for soccer. And this, this isn't very fair because we have the largest sports community right now and it keeps on growing, as you've already heard. So, um, the coaches are kind of being treated unfairly in this way because they're trying very hard and there's still not enough of them and they're still not being paid enough. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Ivan. Uh, next on our agenda is Christopher Hernandez and Christopher is coming to talk about the soccer program.
Hello?
Yeah, got it.
Hello, everyone. Um, I just wanna take a few moments to talk about the Woodland Soccer Program. In more specifics, I'm here to talk about the facilities cause currently, uh, our great coach and one of my biggest inspirations, honestly, like my twin brother said, he's really the main reason I play soccer and I'm just very grateful for him. And, um, so I would like to say how he wakes up at like five thirty to cut the grass, paint the fields, just to make sure we have something adequate enough to play on. And he shouldn't really have to do that because we should have some, like, funding or facilities or more people to like help him out with that. Also, I wanna talk about how like the benches on the modif, on the, the field of the grass field aren't really the best. We have like two benches for away and home, which aren't like very long or, and they're maybe outdated as well, I would like to say. And also, the bleachers on the grass slash modified field are like, are not the best as well. And it's also like kinda unjust that we have to share with the old turf field with football and also girls soccer. So I was thinking that maybe we could get some help on the grass field so we can share that with the girls and also just have another field that isn't just for like everyone to share. And, um, um, if we have the better facilities, like, if we invest in better facilities, we're able to invest in our future and our players and for everyone we have here, we're able to invest and make a, a better program, honestly, for everyone. And I think, like, we need better facilities for the success of this program, the players and everything. And, um, that's mainly it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Next on our list is Brian McCarr and Lucas Bayan. Okay, please fix it for me when you come up and introduce yourselves, please. Oh, Boyan, Boyan McCarr. No? I'm sorry?
Um, hello, my name is Boyan McCarr.
Boyan, thank you.
Um, I'm the freshman varsity captain for Woodland Soccer.
Hello, my name is Lucas Shatter. Best friend and teammate of my captain.
And today, we're gonna talk about the field conditions for the grass field. First, the, the, the ground's very uneven, which leads to like a lot of injuries for us. And we really need better maintenance so we can stop these, all these injuries. For example, when we faced Plundon Va, um, Plundon Valley at home, two of our players got injured because of, like, there's a, like a dip and like there's all these hills in the middle, like a pitch, so every time someone steps, there's like, there's a change of elevation and their knee drops and it's like, they bend their foot and both of them had to come off. So we had to keep like subbing and subbing again and again. Also, for our goalkeeper, John Carlos Garcia, my king, um, he, he broke our, um, the goal scorer, the most saves in New York State and probably one of the top keepers nationally for the US right now. He really has a hard time trying to like take a goal kick to kick the ball across the field because there's all this mud surrounding the, the six yard box. It's like, his foot just hits the, like the dirt, cause it's like lifted up and it's all muddy. And also, cause of this mud, it leads, it's like his, like gloves getting all muddy and slippery and just, the balls like, if he tries to pick it up, it just drops. He can't hold on to it cause it's all this mud. It sucks, actually. Lucas.
Okay, so in addition, what a lot of people said, um, multiple times during practices and games, we take a lot of time just to get the balls. The nets, there's holes in it, so during a match, you shoot the ball, it goes through it and then it's, nobody's there to go get the ball. At practices, we lose at least like fifty minutes cause we have to stop practices to go get all the balls. Multiple times, I fell myself and I hit my back cause there's a lot of rocks there. It's a big hill and it's not fun. So. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next, we have Lucas Ritchie? Lukin, sorry, Lukin Ritchie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I'm gonna be talking about the modified field and some of the conditions down there. Um, like, for example, there's a, it's very badly painted and the grass grows really quick. So like, we have to constantly attend to it and like use maintenance tools, like mow the grass, repaint it. So that takes up a lot of time and a lot of work that our, our coach doesn't get paid for. Also, um, there's a, the modified field, like, it overlaps with the baseball field, which, uh, the material of the baseball field, like, like the clay, whenever it gets wet, it gets all like sticky and like styx or it leaks, so it makes it hard to play and hard to run in that portion of the field. There's, um, bad netting because there's holes all over the place, there's holes all over the field. There's, um, the benches, they're bad. It's, overall, it's hard to play on that field. I, I was a modified player for the past two years and I've struggled personally playing on that field because of the, the holes and the challenges. It's hard to run around. It's, it's just a pain, honestly. That's pretty much all I have.
Okay, next, we have Andre Bracamonte. Andre Bracamonte, obviously, Ms. Tracy's having difficulty reading tonight. But thank you so much, Mr. Bracamonte.
Hello, my name is Andre Bracamonte. I'm here to speak on the soccer field to hopefully, um, get it, um, renovated because at the moment is, as many other people have said, it is not great. It, um, the terrain is very uneven. Um, most of it is actually just dead grass or mud. And, um, another thing I would like to address is actually the fencing. The fencing is, um, really short and most of the fencing has giant holes inside of it. That just causes a lot of balls to actually slip through the fencing and all the way down the cliff. Um, one, one segment of the fencing literally has the bottom portion torn up so balls can literally roll down the hill without e, without it even reaching the air. So it goes all the way down and people have to go down, down the cliff just to grab the balls. Um, another major thing, as many other people said, is that the nets also have holes so sometimes it'll go through the net, go through the fence and down the cliff. Um, in the areas, um, in front of the benches, there's also mostly just pure dirt. So, um, most of our stuff gets dirty when we, um, place it down and the field just becomes, um, just, it's just really destroyed at the moment. I really hope, um, you guys can do something to help, hopefully fix up the field, make it look better and just improve the conditions to allow our players to run on it and use the field properly and do better. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bracamonte. Next, we have Clifton Abrams and the topic is homecoming.
Thank you. I'm Cliff Abrams, um, very active in the community. Um, I'm a district leader for Fairview. I'm on the housing authority board as a commissioner and I have my own 501(c)(3) youth development program called Communities in the Wild Ball. Give the, give the coach a raise. Well, I can't even talk about something else, but, it does my heart well to come up here, to see these young men and young ladies speak on what they believe in. And the coach up here do something very good, they get all them to come out this late at night to stay to speak. You know, that means a lot and it's not easy coming up in front of y'all and speaking, cause I deal with you. And I know how hard it is to get them to show up after school. But anyway, uh, I am, um, alumni from here. Uh, we won the championship at the County Center my year, seventy-seven, um, in the BC Open. But I'm here to talk about the homecoming. You know, and I'm gonna come more often down, cause I'm here, I might say, if all kids is here, it should be more adults up here finding out what's going on with the school. But I wanna say this. So I went to the game and I was trying to figure, why are we in Malverna for a homecoming? You know, and I'm like, okay, but I'm gonna show up, you know, cause people will send us up out, come to the game support. And what kinda upset me was that when you got a homecoming, you usually pick a team you could beat. You know, you don't pick somebody, like, usually before the, the seasons start, the athletic directors come together and I'm sure they make the schedule up and then you find a team that you know you got a chance to beat or beat and you play on that day there. You don't play the best team in the league on your homecoming, right? And I'm sitting there and I'm like saying, I'm sitting there and I'm like saying like, now look at that athletic director, I don't really know the guy, but he's smiling, he's laughing, we losing fifty to nothing. You, it doesn't mean smelling about, you know? And what you need to do and for next year, you know, look for a team that if you can't beat, at least have a good game, right? It's important because y'all had a good crowd. I can't ask all these people, I go, oh, why everybody coming out for support? It made me feel good, but you know, I tell you what, your band is good. How good, at least we won the halftime show. You know, um, I just wanna say this, you know, uh, I don't know how y'all do it, but I know there's some good coaches and I know there's some people from the, from Green Bird that can do a good job. I don't know if he's from Green Bird or whatever, the athletic director, I don't know how y'all go about it, but y'all ain't gonna get rid of him because y'all got a good basketball team. You know, um, we need to be better, you know? We just need to do better and we need to hold people like in a position that he is in to be more accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have Ms. Yasmin Ramirez. Do you have something to give us? Sure. Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Good evening, dear San Berthold Board and everyone here. My name is Yasmin Ramirez and I'm here to speak on behalf of my son Marcus Ingrid, a ten grade student athlete, and on behalf of all the parents who cannot be here tonight. The main concerns are the current issues of the main grass field, modified and JV soccer field and not having more soccer coaching paid positions. Three coach paid positions is not enough. For example, varsity soccer team with twenty-three players have one paid coach, while for varsity football with twenty-two players have five paid positions. One head coach for assistant coaches. To meet the growing demand of student athletes must consider adding more soccer coach paid positions when no trainer or assistant coach, that head coach must handle first aid while coaching. But sometimes that's not the case. My son, in two thousand twenty-two, during a soccer game, fractured a clavicle. The soccer coach couldn't take him to the hospital. Luckily, I was there, I took him to the hospital. To me, okay, um, this year, we had hoped the district would recognize the growing number of student athletes to allocate assistant coaching positions for the varsity JV and modified levels. Unfortunately, the request was denied. The current issues of the field are uneven playing surface, create unsafe conditions and inconsistent play. Random holes make the field dangerous to play. Lack of maintenance means the grass never fully grows and is not regularly maintained. No consistent maintenance leads to dusty, dry and rocky conditions, which, which playing on hard soil increases the risk of non-contact injury tremendously. During heavy rain, the grass field has to be unsoaped close because the wa, the water and the mud. There is no access to electrical power, no lights on the field, which the last two games, we were there in the dark. No soccer board, no designated outdoor spaces for storing equipment, portable bathrooms and bad conditions. Debris on the field, which I have some fans come and collect and place it in, in a bag. I propose solution, grass field reconstruction, drainage installation, irrigation system, synthetic turf insulation, locker rooms and restrooms, garbage can, scoreboard. Please give every athlete the opportunity to train safely, consistently and proudly represent not just our school, but our community as well. Rebuild, rebuild the field whether with natural grass or synthetic turf. Create a lasting athletic facility that meets the growing needs of the soccer program. Add more coach paid positions to ensure proper supervision and improve player development. Finally, help me recognize Coach Tyler, which I don't know who he is, for his consist, consistently going above and beyond his duties to support the athletes, not just on the field, but off the field. not just on the field, but off the field as well. I appreciate your listening and I think and I know our district can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Next, and this is the last speaker, we have Cassandra Caruso and the topic is the soccer program.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Cassandra Caruso. Uh, my son Mason Perella is in the ninth grade and he has played for Woodlands Soccer Team um since the seventh grade. I also have two other children in the district. Um, I'd really like to echo everything that everyone here has expressed tonight, um, especially Yasmin. Because what we're really talking about tonight is more than just soccer fields or coaching positions. We're talking about community, our kids and the values that we want to cultivate together. When our students choose to play sports, they're choosing discipline over distraction. They're choosing teamwork over isolation. They're choosing to better themselves physically, mentally and emotionally. Every time they step on that field, they're learning resilience, leadership and pride in representing their school and our town. By investing in proper facilities, adequate coaching support, we're not just improving the field, we're building a foundation for our students' confidence and motivation. A safe, well-maintained and well-supported soccer program gives our kids something to look forward to, something that keeps them active, engaged and out of trouble. Isn't that what we all want as parents? And this isn't just the district's responsibility, it's a community effort. We as parents are ready to step up and imagine if we had just additional snack stands or concession tables at games run by parent volunteers or even students themselves learning leadership and entrepreneurial skills. Those stands could generate consistent funds for equipment, uniforms and even field improvements. With the right support and coordination, that money stays right here, reinvested in our programs and our children's futures. Together, we can really turn these challenges into opportunities and strengthen our teams, bring families together and create something lasting for generations of students to come. Thank you so much for listening and I also have here over a hundred signatures that we've collected from parents that couldn't be here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Caruso. Please, okay, I was gonna say, leave us with the signatures. Thank you. And we did have a last minute edition of Mr. Richard Rodriguez and the topic is soccer program.
Good evening, board. Uh, my name is Richard Rodriguez. Um, I am a former high school graduate from this school, twenty-fourteen. Um, I graduated with um, Mr. Warner's um, sis- um, daughter, Brianna. Um, she used to be my teammates as, my classmate as well. Um, what surprises me right now and the topic that I'm going to um, talk about is the soccer program. Um, even when I was in school in modified um, JV and varsity, um, the soccer field has never changed. Um, I played in those conditions that the kids nowadays play. Um, and it's upsetting because I'm still here in the community. I graduated from Berkeley, didn't graduate from Berkeley College. I assisted it for three years, but because of financial reasons, I couldn't finish. Um, but at the same time, I was able to move up. I still am working as full-time FedEx contractor. Um, I have two kids and one of my kids is literally right there sitting. Um, he's in eighth grade. Um, but like I said, we, we make mistakes throughout life, but what I learned is that no matter what, um, our parents are always there to support us, right? Um, and I want to support my kid as well. So I've known Tyler for one year already. He did an awesome job with the kids. With the love that he created with the kids is something that surprised me. Um, and what also surprised me is that, um, he needs help, you know? And I give his back because when I was um, junior and senior year, um, I had two coaches. Why is it that they can't have two coaches now? And throughout twenty, twenty-eight until now, they still don't have a second coach. Well, when I graduated, which is, which was twenty-fourteen, um, but that was the last year that I heard that the school had uh, two, um, two coaches for varsity, one coach for JV and one full coach for modified. What I've been hearing is and what I've been seeing actually, because I come to the games every year. I bring my kids to see the games every year. Even when my kid was still in RJ Valley, I'd bring him to the varsity games, JV games, just to support the team. Um, but I, what I've been seeing is sometimes they will just bring school teachers just to be the JV coach and the modified coach. Which I believe they're not going to grow in that perspective. Um, I believe that if they do have somebody that actually knows the sport, they will learn more and more and more. Um, that's how I was, you know, when I was in modified, I had a real soccer coach. When I was in JV, I had a real soccer coach. And when I was in varsity, I was, I also had a real soccer coach. Um, our soccer program was not that great at that time. Um, in my junior year, we had to pay our uniforms, our whole varsity team, we paid our own uniform. We, there was this one time, um, the superintendent, um, not the superintendent, the athletic director told us, you guys have to purchase your uniform because we do not have the budget for it. So my junior year, that's what happened. Senior year and junior year, we were able to win our league title. We went to playoffs, but that's because we put our effort into it, not because the school helped us out. So I'm here to support those kids, to support the parents and to support Tyler. Maybe they'll, maybe we do. All right? Thank you guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. And that is it for our public speakers tonight. And next on our agenda is the introduction of new hires. Do we have any new hires? Ms. Paneda? No? Okay. Next, we have Board of Education School Board Recognition.
Good evening, Board Presidents, Trustee's Committee. Um, last week was School Board Recognition Week. And um, this week we wanted to honor and recognize our school board member publicly.
So Ms. Paneda's gonna help me. We have a small token of appreciation for all the hard work that you all do every day for our students, for our community, and this is on behalf of um, the cabinet and the Greenberg School, Central School District, our students and families. So the first one is going to Ms. Mans. Mayors? Oh, sorry, I can't read. But we just wanted to thank you all for serving. This is a volunteer role. It's a very challenging role, but we thank you for your countless hours of service. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Countless hours. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Chisholm. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll keep going. I had to ditch and dodge the question on what that was on our agenda, you know? The board member's like, what is that? I'm like, I don't know. Um, next we have policy presentation and I'm gonna turn the meeting over to my Vice President, Trustee Valen.
Okay, um, at the last, no. Yes, at the last meeting, the board reviewed various policies and made suggested changes. Tonight, we are presenting them to the public. They will be left open until, they will be left open for comment until they are added to the November eighteenth meeting, at which time there will be a resolution for the board to consider for adopting these revised policies. Copies of the policies are available at the district clerk's office, at the school buildings and district website on board docs. All comments concerning these policies should be submitted in writing to the Board of Education at board@greenbergcsd.org. The policies being considered, that have been revised or are new and being considered for adoption are Policy Thirty-four Ten, a new version of the policy regarding the code of conduct, not the code of conduct itself. Policy Fifty-six Eighty-five, maximum temperature for school buildings and indoor facilities. This is a new policy. Policy Seventy-one Sixty on remote instruction. Policy Seventy-two Twenty-four on virtual instruction. This is a new policy. Policy Seventy-four Seventy on student government. This is a new policy. Policy Seventy-five Thirty, child abuse and maltreatment. There are two policies being considered for repeal. The first one is Thirty-four Ten, public conduct on school property. You may have heard me just say Thirty-four Ten. It's just, it's the similar topic, but it's being retitled Code of Conduct and the wording is changing. So the old version is being repealed, considered for repeal. And finally, Seventy-three Ten, student conduct and discipline. This is also being rolled up into the new version of Thirty-four Ten. If anyone has questions, comments or concerns, email board@greenbergcsd.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Valen. Trustee Valen keeps me honest with policies, but I think it's important to say, especially since we still have students here, um, code of conduct or a policy around, I mean, a piece of the code of conduct policy is something that directly affects students. Maximum temperature for school buildings is also something that directly affects students. So I think that, of course, student government, so I think those are very important. And if you have any time, please peruse through those policies. Next on our agenda is the Ex officio Board of Education Member Report. That would be you, Mr. Eli Cinco.
Um, I've been gathering all the notes, but I don't have any like report or anything, but like I like to summarize what has occurred. I feel like um, the soccer field should be like our number one priority for this school because we did the tennis courts, of course. But have you guys seen the talented students in our soccer team? Like they're leaving, but like, um, Elizabeth Kreitzberg, she's a captain and she got nominated for Low Hud Student of the Week. And that's not something that, that's like bad or anything, but that's something good. And she's like a really good captain. Also, um, Courtney Cruz, she was also nominated for um, Low Hud of the Week. So we should also recognize that as well. They're voting. Three P M tomorrow. Vote for Courtney Cruz, please. Yeah, I think that's, that's it besides that. And it's really ridiculous that, um, we've seen injuries and we've seen um, the fencing being so, so short in soccer field and we've done the tennis courts. So that's all. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. Um, and next on our agenda is the Board President's Report. So I have my report very short this week. Um, I did want to talk about homecoming. We just had our homecoming last week. Um, it turned out to be a pretty good event. Um, no, we did not win as Mr. Abrams said tonight. Um, but we did have a, I thought, pretty good homecoming weather for sure. We were at a beautiful, beautiful field and the fact that we couldn't be on our field is due to improvements and repairs that we're making to our field and our track. Um, next, I did want to say, as um, Eli mentioned, Courtney Cruz is up for the current Low Hud, Low Hud, excuse me, Player of the Week for her performance in soccer. So as Trustee Valen pointed out, the voting is open until three P M tonight, um, excuse me, tomorrow. So please go home tonight. You can go in as many times as you like and vote and vote and vote. We did have a winner from Woodlands in volleyball and I'm gonna mix up her name. But we did have a winner. I'll look on my Sports U because that's where it was. Um, and so we could definitely have the opportunity to win against the um, uh, the other schools in Westchester. So please go on and vote. I'm gonna tell you the name before I finish here. Yes, here it is. Angelina Delgado. She did win the Low Hud Player of the Week. Somebody said yes, so they must remember. Um, so you guys came out and voted, so go ahead and vote for Ms. Courtney Cruz as well, who is also a senior. It was her last year in the school. Um, last but not least, I also want to thank Dr. Chisholm and your administration for our Board of Ed recognition. Um, the Board of Education is a volunteer body. I continue to say that because we do a lot, a lot of work. We do a lot of reading, we do a lot of meetings, a lot of commentary and information about the school district, um, yet we don't work here. We are volunteer. We work alongside um, our superintendent and administration to review policies and procedures for the district. God bless you. Um, and that is our role. It is a requirement of the state that public school districts have a Board of Education and they have to be members of the community to oversee the decisions that are made with the tax dollars. So you know, many, many, many years and moons ago, um, I guess some administration did poor things with tax dollars and so Board of Education members were then um, created and that's what we do. So I just wanted to put that out there and that's why, um, it's important to um, give us that support, but to also understand that we don't work here. So we don't, um, actually, we're not here during the day. I get calls during the day. Sometimes other board members do as well. And I'm at my paid job at that time. So it's important to just know the difference in the people who work here and the people who are volunteering to oversee things. That's it. And I'm gonna pass things on to the Superintendent of Schools for your report tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, President Mayors. I have quite a few things. Um, the first is just a reminder that it's National School Bus Safety Week. So let's all make sure that we continue to keep our students safe while they wait at bus stops, um, while they get on and exit our buses and also to make sure that we're paying attention and stopping when we see flashing red lights on school buses. So I just wanted to bring that to the community's attention. Um, last week I did have the opportunity to attend a couple of athletic events. Uh, Friday night I did attend the girls varsity soccer team against Mount Vernon. It was a zero-zero tie. Um, but it was a good game overall and everybody was safe. Um, Saturday, we did host Sleepy Hollow at the stadium for homecoming. And while we were not successful in a victory, it was nice to see the families. It was nice to see the staff and absolutely the alumni who came to cheer on our football team. Um, it was also a day to recognize our seniors, um, the cheerleaders, members of the football team, as well as our school band members who are graduating seniors this year. So recognizing and acknowledging them on the field with their families. And then we did have the opportunity to honor the class of nineteen eighty-six and members of that football team from that class at halftime on midcourt. So I do want to acknowledge those alumni in the class of nineteen eighty-six who came out, the football players. Um, and they had some encouraging words after halftime for the players. It was good to see them talking to them and engaging with them a little bit. Um, but overall, it was a beautiful day for football and fellowship. Last week, we all know, we cut the ribbon on our new tennis courts. It was great to see the dignitaries, our community members and students, both past and present, who came out to support this event. I just want to thank all of those who made that event possible as well. Thank you. Oh, I can hear it. Last week also on Friday, the RJ Bailey PTA hosted a walking school bus. While it was very cold that morning, it was still nice to see the students and their parents walking to school. And I also wanted to just mention that that's a very healthy initiative and so I do like things like that. So thank you to the RJ Bailey PTA for inviting me. Um, and then I wanted to, during my superintendent's report, respond to... And then I wanted to, during my superintendent's report, respond to the questions that were asked at the September 30th Board meeting at this time. So the first, there were a few questions that were asked by a community member. The first one was in reference to late fees that were collected by the town for school taxes and if the district receives the late fees or any of those penalty fees. And so I do want to share with the community that the town does not pay the school district late fees or interest attributed to late payments for school taxes, and this was confirmed by the town of Greenburg. So I just want to make sure that I respond to those questions for the community to hear. There was also the question about the cost of busing for students in the district, and the answer to that is really that it depends on the student placement, such as private schools, and programming, such as special education services that might be offered in other districts. So those are costs that attribute to busing and transportation. And then the last question was around the individual noting the recruitment signs on the side of the road for substitute teachers and if we were having problems recruiting substitute teachers at the high school. And so the public response to that is just like any other school district, we're always recruiting for substitutes, whether it's for substitute teachers, substitute nurses, those things. So it's not just teachers. We're always looking for substitutes in various areas to fill positions, to cover staff absences for various reasons. So those are the responses to the three questions that were asked at the September 30th Board meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Chisholm. And just for everyone's, I guess, information, responses to Board of Ed questions, there's something that we're constantly working on and looking at in leadership, and that's with the Vice President, President, who's myself this year, and Dr. Chisholm, because we want to make sure that when people hear questions, they also hear answers. And so I appreciate you circling back as well. I think the public that's here appreciates you circling back as well. Next on our agenda is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Dr. Njoku, your report.
Thank you. I wanted to share that last week I had the pleasure of joining some of our teachers at the Guild of International Backglow at Schools Conference in Mystic, Connecticut. And I wanted to share it because two of our teachers, they submitted proposals and they were accepted. So they actually presented to many educators in the Northeast, specifically Ms. Valerie Williams. She's a K-1 primary year program coordinator and reading teacher at LeF Jackson, and she led a hands-on session on using AI. So the theme for the conference was on AI to enhance. So she led the hands-on session on using AI to enhance inquiry-based learning. And then we had Ms. Susanna Berkowitz Torres. She's our middle-year program and extended essay coordinator. She presented on building momentum in IB, especially with implementation and thinking about allyship. It was a very, very engaging. They did an excellent job. Many people came up to us and wanted to know where we were from, and so we were able to represent Greenburg in our forward-thinking. Dr. Faruki, our Director of Global Learning and Academic Excellence, as well as other IB coordinators, Mr. Stephen Rounds, and Ms. Cassandra Buckout, they echoed the same value of professional learning, and they were very thankful to the Board and to the Superintendent for allowing them, enabling them to share the knowledge across with other educators. In terms of events, our parent university, just letting everyone know that the calendar is live. It's on the district website. And then also encouraging our community to attend the upcoming Education Committee meeting on October 30th at 7:00 p.m. in the Innovation Lab. And I do want to add just one more thing. You might start noticing some focus in instruction as you visit classrooms, et cetera. That's because we are continuing with our focus on student discourse, but really looking at productive student discourse, meaning just really focused on being intentional around the purpose and thinking about the enabling conditions needed, the conditions of practices we need to make sure are present in order to encourage and foster and orchestrate that conversation, as well as written discourse in the classroom. And we started first with just clearly setting the expectations with a learning target and being consistent in how we do it, so that there's clear learning targets with success criteria. So the students know what they're doing, as well as it becomes a shared relationship with that "it" to get done for that particular lesson for the day. So thank you.
You, Dr. Njoku. Are there any questions, comments about her report? No? Okay. Next on our agenda is Assistant Superintendent for Business Report and Treasury Report.
Thank you. So we're going to start off with Amy Ashley Moore, our District Treasurer, presenting the September 2025 Treasurer, August, August 2025 Treasurer's Report.
The general fund beginning balance for August 2025 was $23,405,541.62. The district received a total of $1,451,070.10 in receipts. The district issued $1,6062.42 in payroll checks, $2,891,517.68 in accounts payable disbursements, and $467,607.24 in due-to, due-from other funds. The ending balance for the general fund was $20,491,424.38. For the month of August 2025, the district issued 414 payroll checks and 208 accounts payable disbursements. The claims auditor audited all of the disbursements. Any questions?
Questions, trustees? No? Okay. Nope, no questions. Thank you, Ms. Ashley Moore.
Thanks.
Next, we have Ms. Merrill.
So we're going to continue and talk just, I just want to make an announcement about a technology email that recently went out about the acceptable use policy form. So basically what that is, is all students, every school year, their parents need to sign the acceptable use policy, which outlines the expectations for the reasonable use of district technology. The original email went out on September 15th. We recently sent another email, I believe, within the last couple of days to let them know that all students who do not have this policy signed by Wednesday, October 29th, their Chromebooks will be temporarily locked on October 30th, and it will take 48 hours for the devices to be unlocked. So we would like to remind all families, if you could please sign your students' acceptable use policy form as soon as possible. That would be great. Just to give you an idea of, we have approximately 200 students. We have in RJ Bailey, 49 students are outstanding. In Highview Elementary, 20 students are outstanding. In Woodlands Middle High School, we have 111 students outstanding. And in Jackson Elementary, we have 20 students outstanding. Moving on, I want, we want to thank everyone for their cooperation and patience during our road construction for the Water Main Project. The construction company has been working hard. They are making their way down Pacapone Road towards West Hartsdale Road. They actually move about 80 feet per day. Doesn't sound like a lot, but if you come every few days, it does really make a difference. And we would like to please, I'd like to please continue to ask that everybody use alternate routes, if possible, to just reduce the congestion on the road. Other than that, that is the only updates that I have for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill. Are there any questions or comments? Just don't make me be the only commenter. So, Ms. Merrill, I just want to add, and I heard you talk about being safe, but the driving around one another on our campus when we're at stop at the stoplight is just not okay. This is a private road, but if anyone, you know, thinks about the fact that it's a school, we have very young drivers, newer drivers on the road, and driving around people because you're in a rush is very, very dangerous. A newer driver may not be able to navigate quickly out of the way if you were to, you know, go around someone and hit them. So that's very irresponsible, but it has happened to quite a few of us at the stoplight. So everyone should please be more careful. I know that it sucks to have to wait, but as you said, you can also use an alternative route if you're in a rush.
We would definitely like to ask everybody to please obey by the traffic signals for everybody's safety. Students, families, employees, everyone.
Definitely. I'm a little troubled by the, by the technology plan to be turned off and then taking two full days to come back on. I'm troubled by it. Knowing that we have 111 Woodlands Middle High School students, I'm hoping that some of that could be students that have left the district that we haven't caught yet. So maybe this is a way as well to double-check our numbers, but those students are going to be affected, right? So I'm looking to Eli, because you're a student here, if their account gets locked, and it's for two full days, which is different than the other schools. Even though the other schools have outstanding numbers, those students don't do as much work on their Chromebooks as the middle-high school students. I'm just hoping there could be some sort of, I don't know, additional outreach other than email. I can tell you, from having two students now, one's almost, the second's almost leaving, they, if you go in their email box, not that I go in her email box, there's a bunch of emails. They get flooded. It's really a little overkill. So they may not have seen any alerts that they've gotten. I don't know if parents are all checking their emails. Is there any other way to outreach to the 111 Woodland students? You know, we do give our students a lot of voice and a lot of outreach. And yes, Eli, what were you going to say?
We usually get like a call from the school, like regarding events or some sort of that. So maybe like calls.
Robo-call?
Like robot call.
Oh, you guys were thinking of solutions.
Text message.
Wonderful. But I was hoping something to reach out to the kids, maybe not individually to single them out, but just say, like, do the kids know that their stuff is going to be locked if they don't sign? Because, as I was saying, we give our kids voice. We ask our kids to be involved. We invite kids to the board meetings. They should also know and take ownership of the fact that their device or their account is going to get locked for two full days.
That's also on the building principal and school leadership. That's okay. That's also incumbent upon building leadership to make sure that they're making the announcements for students. What we can do is, we did the emails, we're identifying who the individual students are. What we could also do is the all-call system to notify parents as well. But what we can do is also have conversations, now that we know how many students at each building, to have those follow-up conversations with the leadership.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Just real quick, going back on that, we are aware that both the parent and student need to fill out the same form, right? Okay. Because this conversation makes it sound like the student is responsible for one piece, the parent's responsible for another. But when you go on that form, there's a box for the parent and there's a box for the student. So it should be simultaneous, if that makes sense. Just want to put that out there.
And I want to make sure that the students know their stuff is going to be locked. If they have a parent that's maybe not, that's a good point. Maybe if their parent's not participating, then they could let, you know, if we let them know this is going to happen and they're having difficulty for whatever reason, or maybe their parents aren't getting the form or whatever, then that could alert us so that we could, you know, support that.
The one thing that I'd like to mention is, all of us as staff had to fill out the form ourselves. And I will tell you, it takes, it takes a total of five seconds. It is literally the easiest form that you can read and fill out with a click and hit submit. I don't know if that maybe deters people, thinking that they might be going into something that's going to be very time-consuming.
It could be, because you have policies that you might want to read. So there's like three or four up there, I think. So if you want to really reference the policy and read all that, that's another.
Right.
Yeah, that's more than 30 seconds. Because you know I read, so I'm just putting that out there.
I have a question. So when is this occurring?
Right. She said, she said October 29th?
October 29th is the deadline for the form to be done, and October 30th is the day that the student's Chromebook will be locked.
Right. So as a parent, I know my kid can be, you know, remind me, that's the word I'll use for things. The parent, kids can get parents to do things that parents may otherwise overlook or think they'll get to it later. So that's all I'm saying. If we notify the kids, like, hey, your account's going to be turned off, make sure you have your parent involved. If the kid, again, it needs to be done simultaneously. So if the kid has a parent that's maybe not involved or maybe not getting the emails, that is another way we can encourage for the forms to be filled out. Trustee Valen.
Yeah, I was going to say something. We could also put in the school announcements, because the students run the schools announcements for every day, so we could probably do that for middle school and high school.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Principals. Okay, thank you, Trustee Valen.
I think we need to do this, but I need to throw something out there for consideration. Could we consider staggering the shut-off day? I'll tell you why. I would propose that the high school actually should be shut off sooner. I'm thinking Monday, the 27th, or Tuesday, the 28th. The reason is because the kids or the seniors might have early action, early decisions. College applications due November 1st. And if we're going to potentially shut down the use of their Chromebook, and if this is potentially the only device they have, I'd want that unlocked before that deadline. So could we either consider doing it earlier and staggering it so the high school's done one day and/or after the deadline? But there's also deadlines of November 15th. So it gets, no matter when you pick, it's going to be tricky, but at least if you stagger the schools or the student subsets that you shut down, it might also help with the turnaround time when it's time to turn them back on. So please consider a couple of these options.
Yeah.
Bearing in mind the life of seniors especially.
Yeah, I'm going to advocate for after November 1st. I would hate for, like, maybe November 3rd to November 5th instead of, and they have until the 10th or the 15th. You're absolutely right, because seniors are really stressed out right now with meeting that November 1st deadline. But yes, Trustee Long?
I'd like to mention the fact that the emails are going out to everyone. Is there an outreach for the 111 at this building and the 40 at this building? Because I'm wondering how many people are thinking they did fill it out.
Or did I?
Yeah, or did, because there was no confirmation once you filled the form. It just seems there's a flaw in the system that some people may not know that they didn't fill it out because.
So I just want to respond to that. For those that did fill out the form, you actually don't get that reoccurring message every day. So I filled it out. I'm not getting the reoccurring message, but there is somebody who's no longer here whose email gets forwarded to me, and I get that recurring email every day. So the message we sent out today was a blast, an email blast, so everybody did receive it. But the individual emails that are going out every 24 hours are going directly to the 200 individuals that have not completed the form. So if you've completed the form, you should not be receiving that. If you are, definitely let us know, because something's not, something's not right.
Yeah, if you're sending an email every day.
There isn't, there is an automated message that goes out every day reminding the individual. It goes directly to the individual's email. It's like an automated system, reminding them to fill out the form.
Then they're probably either sending it to spam, or you have a wrong email or old email.
It's possible.
So that could probably tell us that we need to do something else if every single day you're not getting.
I mean, I definitely think that the school announcements, we're going to reach out to the principals.
That's a great idea, yeah.
The one thing I just want to make a public announcement about, so there's no confusion, is if we're all in agreement that we're going to change the date and stagger it starting after November 1st, that's fine. I just, we would send out a new email, and I just don't want people to be confused, since they received the original email today, telling them that it was going to start on October 30th.
He was saying just the seniors starting.
Just the seniors? Okay.
Yes, no. Yeah, we'll work on that separately.
And with all the discussion, I just don't want to get it lost that 111, just, I'm going to pick Woodlands, just because. It's possible that those numbers, especially if you're sending emails every single day, I don't want to say ghost in the system, because that's the wrong word, thing to say, but we've had time where we were counting students that either weren't here or had withdrawn. I just wonder if there's a way to. I just wonder if there's a way to look at that.
Yes, certainly. So, I'll reach out to the director of technology. These numbers were provided today. They were actually provided to all of the principals of each building. Technology does have a list with student names on them. So, I will have them look into the list and make sure that all of the students that are listed are still in the school district.
Yeah, it's very possible, whether it's in the district or whatever, you know. The principals know who they are, maybe that would be helpful. Okay.
I have something else.
We'll move on. Yes, huh?
I have something else. Will the teachers be informed of this? Because there might be like assignments, essays due on that exact same timeframe. We just don't know.
So, do the teachers know that students' stuff is getting cut off too? Yeah, good point.
I think we'll make sure that every, everybody is notified once we have a final schedule set that we're going to update soon.
Okay.
One more question, I'm sorry. In the event a child does get locked out from his or her device, is it possible the child can use their own personal computer just to log on at least into the Google Classroom to complete? So, is it literally being locked out of the device or the Google account itself?
I was looking to see if Luke was in the audience still, but he's not.
So, the technology committee chair can probably answer that question for you. Trustee Jacobson.
My understanding is the AUP covers the device and the software and the internet and Google, so it would shut you out of the whole system. But this is all, all the more reason to make sure you sign your acceptable use agreement so that you don't have to worry about deadlines or getting locked out of your system.
So, any Greenberg CSD email that you have, the student has.
Correct. If you are on the Greenberg system, it belongs to the district and you need to agree and opt into that.
And then technically, you guys start this effort like the last week in August, right? Because we're almost done with October, you're still trying to collect these forms.
Correct. And they delayed, they had the last year's AUP expire into this school year to compensate for the lag of people having to sign the new one. So, there's been accommodations made already to make sure that everyone got their, got due time to make sure that they sign on. It's a complicated system.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No, we're moving on. Next on our agenda are board meeting approvals. Can I get a motion for personnel instructional items?
I move that we approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Personal non-instructional items?
I move that we approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Board action items.
I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Finance items.
I move that we approve the finance items presented for the, to the board for approval this evening with the exception of item J2.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Is there a motion for J2? What's your pleasure?
Chris?
We are going to amend the wording of J2. I move that we approve the finance item J2 as amended this evening to read as follows. Be it resolved that is recommended by the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the donation of books valued at approximately $3,500 scholastic bucks for the Richard J. Bailey School in the 2526 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, discussion?
I'm glad, thank you for amending the resolution. I just have a couple clarifying questions about this. Typically, just as a point of information, when you run a scholastic book fair, you have the option to take your profits in cash as a PTA or in the form of scholastic bucks, which means it's scholastic money that you have to then spend through scholastic. It could be books, it could be equipment, it could be shelving for the books, you know, whatever. And so, in, in the past, the PTA has had, used its discretion to use that money as it saw fit, whether it was to purchase things and then gift it to the school or gift it to the students. And so, I guess there has been, in the last couple of years, some confusion about what counts as a donation and what doesn't. Like, what is the purview of the PTA to allow for them to make, give gifts, I guess, to students or the school? I guess I'm trying to figure out why this is considered a donation, especially in the case of scholastic bucks that in theory don't expire. And I, I think part of it is to have a paper trail of things coming in and out of the building. But like, let's say the PTA does not spend all of those scholastic bucks. What happens to like the paper trail of this being a donation if they only find $1,000 worth of scholastic bucks they want to spend? I'm just trying to understand why it's done this way.
Trustee Valen, do you feel like you can answer that question?
I can attempt, but I'm not official. I will say that the letter received from the PTA specifies that we plan to donate books to RJ Bailey, which is what we're accepting. They use an approximate value of $3,500 of scholastic bucks, which is what we're accepting. Our policy on donations, gifts, bequests, et cetera, doesn't have any minimum that we're required to accept. So, any donation to the district or specific buildings or programs within the district, whether it's a dollar or $5,000 or $5 million, the board is required to approve upon the recommendation of the superintendent. I'm not sure if I mentioned your questions, but for this particular donation, that's why we're doing what we're doing.
You kind of answered it. I was under the impression that it was a $500, anything above $500 needed approval.
We amended that policy last year, and you'll see the current version on the policy manual.
And so, then the other question is, if the PTA goes into the scholastic store and finds half in books and half in shelves, does that no longer qualify? Is that no longer an acceptable donation based on the resolution?
I can only state that the recommendation of the superintendent is to approve the resolution per what the PTA themselves is saying they're going to do. If they end up not doing this, I imagine that at some point we may need to amend a resolution. But I'll back away from this. I think I've said all I can say. I'm at my limit of expertise.
So, my question is, for future PTA situations or resolutions in the future, what would be the best course of action if a PTA is hoping to? Because this is intentional, right? Like, it hasn't happened yet. They haven't made a purchase yet. So, if the intention is such, and that's what they, and it changes, or what, how should the verbiage be to PTAs? What should the guidance be so that they can do it in a way that gives them flexibility?
So, in this case, they're not making the purchase. They're donating the bucks for the school.
No, they're donating the books based on the way it's listed, not, but they haven't made the purchase yet.
So. Yeah, we'll consult with legal.
That sounds awesome.
But they're saying, if they're saying it's, but if they're saying it's for books, I'm not sure why they would switch and do something else. I think it's just the fact that they're doing it for books.
It's because of how scholastic does things. Like, they have, there might only be so many books that seem appropriate for Bailey that they want to buy. And so, they have extra money, and they might want to use that scholastic bucks in scholastic in a different way. I'm just trying to make the process easiest so that we're not having like seven resolutions for the same chunk of money.
Yeah, because I feel like I know what I want to say, but it might not.
Okay, so when we get a letter from somebody wanting to make a donation and the letter is specific, the school district has to have that board approved, and that's what we are able to accept. So, in other words, if they end up using the money to purchase something other than what was board-approved, that kind of goes against what we're supposed to do and they would have, we'd have to have an amendment done. If somebody is looking for flexibility in a donation, you basically are not going to be very specific. So, in other words, let's say somebody wants to make a donation to the third grade in, in our building. They could say, we are donating blah, blah, blah to the third grade. And that makes it a little bit more flexible as to what the money can be used for. If the letter is specific, then we are supposed to adhere to those, the specific letter, and that's what we are to accept.
Okay, so maybe in this, this example, maybe a more flexible statement of intent would have been, we want to spend, no, I'm just saying in general for future guidance, that in the future, it would be.
Perhaps for future guidance, whoever would like to make a donation can consult with the superintendent and/or the business office, and we can offer that guidance at that time to whoever may want to donate a new soccer field, a wing of a building, a new roof.
I think part of the problem is, multiple questions have been asked and multiple different answers have been given. And so, I'm trying, trying to get to a point where we're all on the same page, because I think people have gotten different information so many times that there is a need for clarity. That doesn't have to happen in this moment. I'm just saying that there is a need.
Okay, trustee man.
I just want clarity. We got this money because we sold books at Bailey. So, Scholastics is giving us a form of money, if you will, right?
Giving the PTA a form of money.
Yeah, but is this really a donation? Because it's not like they're like, oh, man, $3,500, take it. No, you had to sell those books to get your $3,500 anyway, right? So, sorry, Chris, I hear you mumbling.
No, I think, I think this is why there's so much confusion is because what, what counts as a donation and what do we need resolutions for? And what is the purview of the PTA?
So, the PTA is separate from the district? The PTA is separate from the district? So, if this was a PTA event, it's not district funds until the PTA donates it to us. So, that would be my take on why they're, they put it in the form of a donation.
Okay. Let's vote. Ms. Panade, I'm going to ask for you to pull the board, please, on this item. It's been properly moved and seconded, and we will pull the board. Thank you. We're voting on the amendment that, it's fine. Yes, but usually I go last.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. I don't even know where we were. Let me go back. I believe we were on, shh, 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 people, what? Can I get a motion for people personnel services items, please?
I move that we approve the pupil personnel services items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now, we're moving on to closing items. First, we have new business. Is there any new business? I just want to thank Mr. Hanrady for joining us this evening. He is our new executive director of human resources and professional learning. Thank you. I cannot remember all the names. So, thank you for joining us this evening. Today is your first day of work. Long day, long day. But guess what? It's before 10 o'clock. It's 9:49. Is there any other new business trustees? If not, can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
The facilities committee meeting is November 12th at 6:30 PM in the Woodlands Innovation Lab. And the CEC, Community Engagement Committee meeting is October 23rd at 7:00 PM in Highview. That's it.
All are welcome.
Yes.
I, I have one. So, there is a safety committee meeting on Monday, October 27th at 6:30 in the Innovation Lab. All are welcome. And I would also like to welcome any ideas and suggestions for goals and topics of discussion for the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee man. This seems catchy. Trustee Jacobson?
I just want to be like with the cool kids. The wellness committee is this Friday in the Freelo Center from 12:30 to 2:30. All are welcome.
Thank you, okay. This Friday, the 24th. Some of us will be at a convention. Okay, anything else? No? Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We are adjourned 9:50 PM. Thank you.